Shall we call this meeting to order? Start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, and justice for all. All right, welcome to the regularly scheduled school board meeting. And I'll start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Seeing none. David, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Announcements?
Announcements, so this was a conversation that we've had at a previous board meeting around not waiting until the end, so that's why these are ahead. So hopefully some of our viewers that are in the audience will get to hear this sooner, although we don't have a lot in the audience. But we're happy for you to be here Cory, and you as well Eric. Frederick H. Title Middle School, the drama is presenting the guys and dolls on Friday night. Friday at 7:30, Saturday, May 10th at 2:00, and also at 7:30. Orchard Spring Concert for grades two through five is scheduled for Tuesday, May 27th. Big Picture, South Burlington Students Service Learning Presentations have events that are scheduled beginning on Monday, May 19th, 12 to 1:30, and that will be at the South Burlington City Hall in 570 Dorset Street. The dedication to the South Burlington Veterans Memorial at Dorset Park is happening on Saturday, the 17th, at 2 o'clock, and we'll have some students of ours that will be involved in that as well. I wanted to just add here, the composting at Orchard was, there was a little teeny tiny feature, they did some composting things, and that was on at WCAX with some of our students engaged in that, as well as Math Night at Chamberlain, they did also a little, a little take there as well. And there's some information on the International Exchange Program, and also on the PAT, Parents Celebrating Children and Teens, for an upcoming dinner on May 14th, 5 to 7:30 at the high school. Were there special events? That's all I have. Sure, again, this is the time of year, obviously our student reps are not here, there's a lot going on, outside and inside.
And I think the, has everyone gotten a schedule of sophomore advisories? And if, I would encourage people, if you haven't signed up in the past, as a community member, it's a great experience to go to and kind of see that program in action. So I think there's a series of dates that run into early June, right?
Mm-hmm. I think they're almost filled out, I mean, not that you can't get on those, but they're, they're close to filling up, they're trying to get those solidified. John Painter.
Three for next week.
Nice, yep. That's great.
Good.
Wonderful.
All right, we'll move to the city school collaboration.
We did not meet this week, that was actually, I had a conflict. So we did not meet, we are on for next week, and I don't really have anything to update the board on from what I did last time.
Agenda item seven, school property regulations.
So this actually is an item that we, the, the board has been dealing with for, for quite some time. We've had discussions around safety zones around our particular schools. This obviously has some connection to the methadone clinic and the work associated with that, and our, some of the litigation. But more importantly, the zoning, and I'm gonna let Martin talk to this specifically, but the zoning changes as it is as of now, and then under form-based code language, what that means to us. And so although this has, as an action item, we don't think that it's really ready for an action item for you, so we will, unless you change your mind here, we'll take that off an action and be able to come back to you with on the 20th. And we also believe Paul Connor has expressed interest to also come back and answer any questions. But let me turn it over to Martin, he's been, again, a really helpful resource to us at the, at the city and attending a lot of the form-based code committees, so Martin.
Yeah, I guess there's probably three items to, to talk about with respect to the language that, that you received on, on Monday, that I forwarded from Paul Connor, dealing with the, it talks about civic sites, so it's broader than just central school. But this, this school is going to be within city center, within the area that the form-based codes are going to presumably be implemented within the next few months. And this site, or this particular regulation addresses how development can be done in the future for any civic site, including the school. I mean, if you have specific questions, I could try to answer them, but one of the, the first thing I'm gonna suggest is that we have Paul Connor come to the next meeting and, and explain it, he would do a much better job of explaining exactly what this provision means. The second thing I would suggest that we decide today is actually to forward this to our, to the school's attorney, whoever is the appropriate attorney, to have them take a look at it as well, because I, I'm not comfortable giving you my two cents worth on, on this thing. And I guess the, the third item which I think is, is most part, I mean, when I looked, well, first of all, when I looked at this language, it, it seems fine to me, but again, I don't know all the pitfalls that I could be missing. So that's why I'm suggesting we have both Paul come and explain it, and we also have an attorney look at it. But the, probably the most interesting part of the communication from Paul Connor was actually not in this language that he forwarded us, but his update regarding prohibited uses. And he, and he mentioned that the planning commission, well, first of all, let me back up for one second, the planning commission is still looking at form-based codes, including regarding civic site, including regarding prohibited uses, and they're going to be, over the next few weeks, probably forwarding this to the city council. They're, they're doing a redline version, they're working with the form-based code committee, they're probably gonna have some more public comment, and then it will be forwarded. I didn't get a specific date from Paul Connor regarding when it's gonna go to the city council, but.
Is the language public?
The language, yeah, it's been public and it's, there've been multiple meetings about this. But they, they're gonna have draft amendments of this and put it out for input for four to six weeks, so, and that's not been done yet, so we have at least six weeks probably before this gets forwarded to the, to the council. Now with respect to safety zones, there are, Paul has indicated that the planning commission has, has in fact added three particular prohibited uses. Now if you recall, in our safety zone proposal, we had a list of 10 different uses that we thought should not be permitted in an area around all schools, not just central school, but central school, middle school, high school is most important at this point, because when the form-based codes gets put into place, unless a use is specifically prohibited, it is allowed. And we obviously have problems with that. But there are three uses that they are going to be putting in as being prohibited in the form-based code area, including junkyards, adult uses, and motor freight terminals. And those are in fact three of the 10 that, that we have, we had listed, but there are still seven that they have not put in there. They also have explained that there's a whole list of prohibited uses, and I'm not sure if you got that particular list.
I have a copy of that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a list currently of, of prohibited uses, there are 16 prohibited uses, and, and the, and my understanding is that the latest form-based code will prohibit those uses for any existing buildings. So if there, if there's a new building being put in, this doesn't apply, and, and you could have manufacturing or car washes, or, there's a, there's a whole, a whole list of, of the various prohibited uses, some of which we actually borrowed or put into our proposed school safety zone, although we modified them somewhat. For instance, manufacturing, we didn't just say there shouldn't be manufacturing, there shouldn't be manufacturing to the extent that it's involving explosives or hazardous chemicals and the like. Any event, I think we're gonna, there's two questions I have. One is whether the school board should go back to the planning commission and say, all right, that's all very nice that you, you have three of our prohibited uses in here, but there are still seven that we think you need to address. I'm not sure that that's gonna get us very far, because frankly, the, the one that's the, the biggest issue for the planning commission is our proposal to prohibit medical offices to the extent that they distribute title, was it Title I, Title II?
Class.
Class, thank you, Class I, Class II narcotics. And, and that's kind of one that's been the hang-up and has caused them to say they want to wait until they hear what the Supreme Court says on our methadone clinic issue, even though I don't think it's gonna inform it. The point is, I'm not sure that it will do us any good one way or another to go back to the planning commission and say, hey, thanks for those three, but there's seven more that we still want you to address. Or wait until it's gonna go up to the council, see what the planning commission has suggested, and then decide what kind of communication we want to have to the city council. I think we've made it clear in our steering committee meetings about this issue.
Could we ask Paul for an update on the status of the outstanding seven?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, that may make sense, just to get an update from him at the 20th meeting.
Right.
And, and Martin, these, it wasn't clear to me that these were, is there another level of state prohibited uses that would supersede, or that would be an umbrella to any local decisions that might be made?
I, I know of one which is cannabis dispensary, there may be other specific ones I, I don't know of.
That might be something to ask Paul as well.
Yeah, I would, I would instead, well, we could ask Paul, but we could perhaps ask Sean as, as well, because I think he probably, in fact, I know he looked into that kind of question when he was helping us with this issue earlier.
What was the specific question?
That one I didn't get.
Well, it's really, is there, is there a state level of prohibited uses that would kind of be another layer to this?
My understanding is he did look at that, but we should confirm. So. I, my suggestion is that we see what the planning commission comes up with at the end. I suppose we can reiterate to them that, you know, we appreciate that there are the three prohibited uses, but we continue to have our concern, yeah, that probably makes some sense to, to do that, and I'd be happy to draft something, and I don't know if that, we're not gonna get very far, we've already talked to them, but we may as well remind them that we're paying attention. And then we can decide what to do once it goes to the city council.
So is the board comfortable if Martin drafts the letter to the, it would be to the planning commission? Regarding the outstanding prohibited uses that we've recommended? Okay. That'd be great, Martin, thanks.
Should we get Paul to come on the 20th?
I think that makes sense, yeah.
And also send us on to the, to an attorney?
Perfect.
Great.
You get all that?
Mm-hmm.
David's, David's follow-up list is half full now.
I can't write small.
All right, any other questions on the school property regulations? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item eight, update of the methadone clinic appeal.
Again, pretty quick, we have not yet received any updates or any affirmation of the status of our current pending legal matter in front of the Supreme Court, so we're, we're just kind of waiting, and we'll have to, we'll continue to keep this item on the agenda until we hear.
All right, agenda item nine, update on the proposed fifth grade transition.
So those committee meetings have been ongoing, again, I have not been in attendance to those, but I know there's a lot of hardworking people that serve on those committees, and they meet again on tomorrow. And part of what's happening is there's been some clear direction by the steering committee to basically put a halt to any developing new ideas, and to come back with status of where they currently are, and, and be able to give an update and begin to prepare for kind of making sure there's some clarity around some of those particular areas. And I know John and both Stuart are, are both on that, and I don't know, Stuart or John, do you want to offer any, just quick update on the, from your perspective around where things are at, as you've been at those meetings?
Well, I think the, the key thing is that the steering committee has asked the other committees to basically report on what we've accomplished and what things we feel need to be, the time is too short, so what do we need to do as next steps, you know, to continue to explore these possibilities?
So again, what's been done, what are the questions that still need to be answered, what activities will be undertaken to address those questions, how will the governance in the process change to improve the flow, you know, et cetera? So there's some very specific guided questions on this, and again, they've essentially mapped out some of the expectations for each of the committees from tomorrow, May 8th, all the way through June 5th.
This is coming from the steering committee?
This is coming from the steering committee, yeah. So they, they've mapped this out, they gave me a copy of kind of their, their thinking as far as the timeline. And so again, that's, that's all I have really for an update. John, did you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Tomorrow is a key meeting, I'm in the infrastructure group, and there's supposed to be agreement on a committee version of the report format, brainstorming each piece of the report in a group, get volunteers to make a draft from this meeting, and circulate a draft before May 20th, so this is a lot of work here. Yeah. And also, you might have said it, but there's a facilitator from Champlain College that's helping with the steering committee? I know his name's Julie, and I don't know his last name.
Good luck on saying this, enunciating his last name. I won't probably try to do that. Anyway, thank you, John.
And how, how is the website with frequently asked questions going? I haven't gone on it myself in the last week or so.
Stuart?
We did a big update right before the, I think right before, right after the break, so pretty much all the frequently asked questions, you know, have been consolidated and answered.
Okay.
Or at least responded to, right?
By answered, I mean responded to, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, right.
You know, some of the answers are, we don't know the answer to that yet, you know, but where we do know the answer, we've done as best we can.
So anyway, a lot of hard work going on. Again, I think it's, the conversations have been, what I'm hearing around have been really helpful, and, and affirming some of our, our work currently happening in the district, and whether that's middle school activities or, or elementary activities. So again, I'm very appreciative of the hard, of the hard work that's happening.
Any other questions or comments on the fifth grade transition? All right, we'll move on to agenda item 10, which we will skip, we'll hold just in case we have a student representative. Move on to agenda item 11, superintendent's report.
So again, I did include in the packet, you know, the items. The first item on my superintendent's report was the high school enrollment decision with Big Picture Program, and I reported in here that I would have information for you. Again, I've not yet received all that information, so we'll put it back on to, we'll put it on the 20th. We last talked about this in July last year, actually, and we had this cap discussion, so while I would have liked to have had it for you tonight, again, I want to make sure, and certainly I've been sensitive to the high school staff, and I expect that I'll have it anytime.
So David, can I just ask a question, because I got a phone call about this yesterday, asking if this was an action item on our agenda, a parent had seen this on our agenda, will this become an action item on our agenda, and if so, do you know, do you have an idea about when?
Well, I think we should, it would be nice to have, you know, information out to folks on the 20th. There are some things in, in the interplay of the program currently, you know, around the current continuation in enrollment of our own, so that's part of what they're trying to really be mindful of in planning for next year. So I think if not the 20th and the first meeting in June would be, would be on there, and I, it, it should be an action item, it's an important program, and it just, we should announce kind of our numbers.
Well, the action is specific to the enrollment cap, correct? Okay.
So number two is wanting to update the board on what we're calling the New England Secondary School Consortium's Next Gen Personalized Learning Initiative, a long whole bunch of acronyms I'm sure will come out of that. This is a five-state partnership working to promote forward-thinking innovations in secondary education across New England. The consortium's ultimate goal is to ensure that every public high school student receives an education that prepares them for college and career. This initiative's lead coordinator is the Great Schools Partnership. And so essentially what is happening here is South Burlington is interested in taking advantage of this opportunity. Because we are, and because we've been doing what we've been doing, and we're in good, we're well positioned, the leadership team of the high school, myself, would like to apply for the League of Innovative Schools Next Gen Grant for coaching guidance around creating personalized learning plans for all students. And just recently, Pat Phillips, Alyssa McDonald, Elizabeth was nice to join us through a request and have essentially signed on to do this. We're doing it anyway, when you think about personalized learning plans, proficiency-based graduation, these are things we're currently already have in the queue. So there's no commitment by the district other than to continue to do that work and to take advantage of the resources that would come to us as a result. So let me just pause there and answer any questions, and again, Stuart, you're, obviously, he's familiar with this as well, so let me pause.
Is there any incremental cost to this?
I would say at this time, you know, there's no specific identified amount, there may be some things that come out of the work that might recommend either a reduction or an increase, I suppose, for incremental costs.
McDonald and Phillips, when they come, come in, will they be able to be fairly specific about what they hope to gain and what they have to invest in order to make that, to realize that gain?
Absolutely, and definitely on the proficiency-based graduation, the personalized learning plans, and the product.
Do they, what happens if they don't get this grant?
We continue to do what we've been doing, which has been pretty, pretty significant in, in moving our school forward. That's part of what, what qualified us essentially, is that we're far enough along, and it put us in a, what I'm gonna say, a desirable group of folks to be eligible to even apply for this. So you can't be on the infancy level and get this, you gotta be, you know, in, in the queue here, moved, moving forward quite significantly to qualify.
So in fact, the second two days of the June in-service days at the high school are all around proficiency-based graduation, working with a consultant, a free consultant from Eagle Rock, and we're gonna be doing that at the department level, really looking at what are the proficiencies by content, because we don't know yet if the state is going to have state proficiencies, so we don't want to really do the school-wide ones, plus they also, you know, it's the match with the ends for ourselves, you know, so building it from the, the ground up in personal learning plans is part of that question of proficiency. So we have to do the work anyway, and as David said, you know, because we have, you know, because of actually, you know, some forward thinking from the high school administration, I really want to give credit to Patrick Burke, especially around this, we are and have been talking about this prior to the state mandating it, and so, and as well as the ends putting us in those directions as well.
Yeah, a couple of things that impressed me when I met with Alyssa and Pat were, one, this, this, at a minimum, the support that they would get around moving initiatives forward that we're gonna do anyway is an added value with this grant. We also, this becomes a platform off of which the high school would look at, NIESC accreditation, which I think, what year would that happen?
I think it was two years.
Two years, yeah. So, so we're kind of preparing ourselves for that accreditation process going through this. And then the third area is, I asked, as I always do, about is there money available for specific needs that the district might have, and, you know, I think we are certainly better off than some other schools that might be applying for this, but one area that Alyssa and Pat did indicate was an area that, one, you may see, Dan, to your question, you may see a need for incremental investment, but it may become a gap in us being able to deliver the, the individual learning, or proficiency-based, or individual learning plans, is data. And it's really access to real-time data in terms of student, I guess, both outcomes and assessment. And that is an area right now that is, is more difficult for the district. I don't think we're any different than most schools, to tell you the truth, but to the extent that Alyssa and Pat can secure funding to, you know, help that investment along, that may be an outcome as well. I might be being optimistic there, but.
Certainly an area that we've heard a lot about, about this inadequacy of being able to address the full gamut of all the, of all the data associated with the students and their records, and bringing those together in the appropriate way with the appropriate confidentiality constraints on it and all that stuff, so if, if some progress can be made there, that, that could be very helpful.
So. Again, if you have other questions, we're happy to, you know, keep you posted on that as we move through that again. You'll see some more when Alyssa and Pat come back, and you'll see some graphic kind of sharing of, of that progress as well. The request for proposal, specific to the audit of the teacher evaluation, I wanted to give you an update on currently, this has been a long and, I'm gonna say frustrating to you, board, board members, and I apologize for that. The, the good news is, is that as a result of reaching out to individuals, primarily since the last time we met, although I did indicate, or we did indicate, that you want to have a couple of board members kind of sit in with individuals as we went along. I made contact with them, Karen assisted me with that, and many of them then gained some additional clarity, new people we added, and basically said, we just want to respond. So we have one currently received RFP. I initially felt that we were probably gonna need to change, or re, you know, re-scope the RFP, but as a result of receiving one already, and then others are going to respond, some of the newer people that we've connected with, and so we think we'll have at least three responding. We already have one in the queue, and so I need to now make a determination, like how long to wait before that then gets revealed to you, or provided to you, or you get the opportunity.
Did the RFP have a due date on it?
It did not, it did not. So we, we left it open, and that's again, you know, part of it, and so as a result of receiving one, I didn't then want to change, so that's where we're at. And again, I think the, a lot of the questions were around, you know, kind of rationale purpose, and again, we hadn't reached out to some of these folks as a result of it not, not getting to them. So anyway, we'll come back, I think on the 20th, and we'll be able to share, you know, which ones we have in the queue, and you can make the determination if you want to, want to look at those. Kind of honoring the RFP process, we probably ought to just set a date, I ought to just set a date by such and such, and then you have, then you can have that and open that. Okay?
Yeah, I think, well, we'll wait and see where you're at with additional proposals, but if you're expecting to have a total of three within the next week or so.
Well, we have one now.
Yeah. It sounds like you'll have more information at the May 20th meeting.
Right.
Hopefully, three responses.
Yep.
I do think, I don't want to speak for the board, but I guess I'd ask my colleagues, we originally wanted a couple of board representatives in this process, so once you get the proposals, would it make sense to kind of re-engage board representation?
I think that was essentially what I was thinking, is that you then could have those, and you could, you know, do it with what you need to around the, what you have available to you, and have, answer questions if there are questions, once those are then opened.
Yeah.
Did we want to do that by committee? I think Martin and I.
There was two of you, and, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Good.
So an update on, I put this legislative update as I usually do, and this is a lot of information in here, so I, I'm gonna, I'm not certainly gonna be able to summarize all of this that well for you. The first one is H883, and obviously the, this is the regovernance, the pre-K to 12 regovernance legislation that's currently out there, and safe to say that it's, it's not passed yet, there's, it has passed the House, it's in Senate, and it is, I'm not really sure, as of this week, it doesn't seem to have a lot of energy in it right now, as far as the committee, as I can tell. The last update we had was on April 11th, that came out of the. The last update we had was on, uh, uh, April eleventh that came out of the, the, the VSA and the VSBA. And so there are different pieces that are happening that are coming out of this that require, you know, a design team. There's some specific date changes that are happening. Public hearings are being suggested X number of times, ten times or more. So there's a lot going on here, uh, with that. It does seem like that has some fairly positive energy at the present time. So, um, again, I'll keep you posted on that. Anybody have anything else to add to that? It's likely you've been reading as well.
It sounded like it was most likely not gonna get passed this term and, and there's a question of whether they were going to extend the session by a week. I think I was in the paper earlier this week, uh, to consider this among other things. But it didn't seem very excited about that.
So the other one is eight eighty-nine. And those of you that know eight eighty-nine, it has a lot of, it's the, um, spending, uh, controls and it also has some other, um, attached pieces in there. And one of those obviously is the, um, the residential tax rate change. And as you know, we set our budget, um, based on what we thought it would be. And then there's, then there's been communication that has come out and then yet again. And we've even had some of our colleagues that have been trying to get budgets passed to use the best information that they have available, which seems to be changing. But what I'd like to do, John did prepare just a, a brief kind of our typical budget summary and I'd like John just to maybe walk through, uh, what that, what that means, so you're updated. So, John.
Well, I kinda split it because at the top, there's things that aren't changing. Our budget was passed at forty-four million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand and the draw from the education fund is thirty-five million, et cetera. So those things don't change with legislative action. But the, the two areas, uh, the two tax rates that, uh, are in play are the residential tax rate statewide, which, um, was estimated. You see the, the number, uh, for the FY fourteen budget was dollar fifty-two. We based our budget communication as an estimate back in January and then, uh, for the vote i- in March on, um, a tax rate of a dollar, um, one, which was, uh, which we get every year at the end of November from the State Tax Commissioner, Mary Peterson. And that was the information we had. As of April, early April, the House had passed, uh, eight eighty-nine on their end and, uh, the rate was ninety-eight cents. So that reduced our increase, our, our tax rate from a dollar sixty-four to dollar fifty-nine. But down now, the Senate is, is proposing a dollar in that residential tax rate and that affects our, our tax rate to be a doll, one point six-two-six-two or a do- dollar sixty-three. So it's all in play. And it's, it's, the budgets, I live in Colchester and, um, you know, they had the H eight eighty-nine number in their estimate, um, because it's the best they, they know to do. And that's one of the things, what is our budget? What's our tax rate? It's always an estimate until this, till the legislature, uh, sets it. I don't have much more information on the, um, spending limit that was in the House bill. But I do know that there is a move afoot to make that, um, limit be stricter. So I didn't see anything where that was lost by Senate action.
Help me with my remedial.
Okay.
Remedial tax rates here. If, if the tax rate that was budgeted was at one-six-four.
Yes.
And let's just say it goes to the lower level, the House number of one-five-nine.
Yes.
Our, our, our approved budget, it stays the same.
It does, yes.
What impact does that have? Um, 'cause this has to affect the revenues collected, correct?
No, well, it, it affects what people pay into the state education fund in their, in their property taxes, yes.
Okay, so it would reduce what's paid by your homeowner. We, I know we had a, you know, for an average, three hundred thousand dollar property. It would reduce the tax paid, correct?
Either scenario would, although, um, the increase in the Senate version right now is seven point one percent increase. And, and, uh, it was five percent with the House bill, so.
And that's a substantial difference there.
Sure is.
But the, but the revenue doesn't change, right, John? I mean, the, the revenue for us.
Well, our own, our own local revenue and, no, that doesn't change. Our estimates would be, still be the same.
But, but isn't it true, John, that the potential financial in, impact on individuals very much depends upon their status? As to whether they're a homeowner or a, for a renter or something else? Because there are some other provisions in this that move other monies around.
Income sensitivity, yeah.
That's right. The non-residential tax rate is part of it. There's, that's the third part. And it's, it's, it's at the same rate as we had projected back in March, you know? It, it, it doesn't change with the House bill. It went up a little bit.
So, so does this mean that the draw on the ed fund? I mean, it would seem with the lower rate, um, the, what goes into the ed fund is lower than the original rate that, um, that was recommended?
Yes. Yes, but our draw is the same.
Our draw will be the same?
Yes.
So does it create a shortfall in the general ed fund?
It, it, it depends on the totality of all the budgets that go in. And, uh, the House was working with information, there are thirty-four districts who hadn't passed their budgets yet. And that's still, there's still a number that haven't.
So that, that's part of the issue is there's not a firm, um, uh, draw number on the ed fund? Cause so many budgets didn't pass.
That's right. Plus there's other, the general fund contribution is, is, is variable. The non-residential tax rate is variable. And like Dan said, the, um, the effect of income sensitivity has changed the percentage that's allowed per individual is, is in play too. So, um, um, I should always keep that letter from the tax commissioner with me because there explains the seven or eight, um, components of the taxes, one of which is the lottery. You know, which is, is a more minor part of it, but there's some sales tax that's allocated to this too, so.
But the fact of the matter is that people can become income sensitized based on the change in a job, which changed their, their, their structure and their ability to pay.
Right.
And they, you know, that, that has a significant factor on the, on the tax rate as well. So it's really, it's hard. I mean, I think, you, we, obviously we all get it. It's, there's a lot of moving parts within that. And, um, so again, that's a little bit of the effects of eight-eight-nine. We have a whole bit, whole bunch of other things within eight-eight-nine too, when we address some of those. Then income sensitivity, small schools grant, you know, there's some other pieces in there as well to, to pay attention to. But again, enough on eight-eight-nine. It did go to, um, committees on rules and finance. Committee on Rules and the Committee on Finance, um, is kinda where they're sitting right now, I believe, and being worked on. Um, the other one is, uh, H two seventy, which did pass. H two seventy is preschool programs to get state support, so universal pre-K bill. And so there's, although there's already currently, uh, in play that that happens, although there's a wait period for individuals that receive qualified care for more than ten hours. This bill that did pass goes into effect July one, two thousand and fifteen. And so it provides a much easier way for, for, um, pro, students to get into the, into the program and for money to be received. Again, there's some questions here around the financing of that and where is that gonna come from? Again, that's a dependency on also the draw from the ed fund. The last one I'll talk about is H six seventy-three, which is the, um, uh, Teacher's Retirement Fund. And this actually came up and it was currently passed today. We found out this afternoon that it passed today. And this is a, a, a bill that specifically, um, has money that gets attached to any new staff member that comes on board in a school or school district. And it requires that an amount of money, um, to the amount of one thousand seventy-two dollars gets added to them on an annual, into, into the system on an annual reoccurring basis. And so.
And that dollar amount can go up?
That's right.
Year over year.
And so.
And the source of that money is?
Yeah, and that's that same, that same source we were talking about before. So you can, uh, there, there was some responses, you know, to this, um, obviously. I, apparently this has been a fairly active conversation. Um, I was not, I did not feel like I was totally on top of this one. Um, it did pass. There's some pretty significant concerns around compounding, as you can tell. If you have a staff or a school that changes fifty percent of their staff, now you have to take on that year-over-year cost. That's a pretty significant amount of money. So, um, obviously I think some of the argument of this is that, you know, with new people coming on, there's this cost savings from a retiring teacher to a new, that's their premise. That's part of the, what I've been hearing back from some of the, from some of the correspondence that's been happening. That's the rationale that's generally been used.
But that's also taking what's traditionally been a collective bargaining.
That's right.
Scenario for a district or supervisory union. The state's basically taking that benefit.
So I think we're gonna, I mean, it is, it's been passed. We're gonna have to pay attention to, you know, what we can do now.
Is this one that, um, we can develop some scenarios kinda based on our, um, our current configuration? And just kind of understand before we get into the budget cycle, what that, when, when does this go into effect? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I haven't, um, I don't know that that's necessarily been stated here yet. I don't have it in this particular, in FY sixteen, maybe fifteen would be, July one fifteen, going to effect July one, two thousand and fifteen. So a year from this, July. So yes, we can do some estimating as we go along. I think there'll be some level of advocacy around what that means for us and also communicating back with our legislators. So that's all I have.
Um, one, one bit of feedback I got from, um, one of our legislators was that, um, part of the, there is some language in this H six seventy-three that requires each July, the Joint Fiscal Office would determine the amount of unfunded mandates imposed on supervisory unions and school boards and present the total to the Joint Fiscal Committee of the Legislature, which will review and approve the total and then add it to the general fund transfer to the ed fund. So that, that was a little bit of a new twist.
So, they're gonna transfer from where to where?
Well, they would, they would document the amount of unfunded mandates and transfer from the general fund to the ed fund.
So the increment of the general fund contribution to the ed.
Right.
Consistent with the unmandated, so.
Well, you're assuming they're gonna take it and increment it up as opposed to say, this is, you know, this is how much we're putting in from the gen, general fund. I mean, if they're putting thirty million without it tied to anything, they'll say, well, actually we only should be putting twenty million 'cause that's what the unfunded mandates are. So.
Well, I think the good news is it's just, there's some recognition of the unfunded mandate.
Mm-hmm.
So now we need to make sure we understand this.
It's, sorry, I was gonna, you said what committee is it gonna go to?
Um, it's gonna go to the, uh, the Joint Fiscal Office each July. And it's the Joint Fiscal Committee of the Legislature, which will review and approve the total and then add that to the general fund transfer to the ed fund. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, move on to Agenda Item Twelve, Administrative Reports.
So, uh, school action plans. And again, in your packet are the school action plans. Um, I'm not sure if you have specific questions, but Stuart is here to, you know, walk you through a little bit at, bit of that information and also answer any questions that you might have. Stuart?
Just, just to clearly, um, just like many other things that are in flux because of the new educational quality standards, action planning is, uh, one of those, uh, pieces. I didn't put in last year's action plans. Uh, actually, you had seen some of those as part of, uh, two-point-one-oh when it was given to you in November. But I get put in the school improvement plans for the schools because besides action plans, all our schools that are in need of improvement, which are four out of our five schools, uh, have to do these plans, which they update periodically. It was just an update. Um, after a year and a half on the old plan, they were updated for the next two years. And those are things that our, uh, state federal grants will also, um, ser, uh, use. So for example, uh, just looking at the first paid on, on Orchard School, we need to use those, uh, indicators such as, uh, debt and management system is in place with necessary technology to support. If something in our grant relates to that, we, we need to put in those indicators now. And that's new this year in terms of our relationship with the state. But the other piece is, it's gotten to the point where there are four or five different types of plans. So for example, this is Green Mountain Star Work, which we're in. Some school, uh, improvement districts are in different systems so that there are three or four, depending on when they got into school improvement. And, um, the state is working on one continuous improvement plan for all districts and schools. And we're supposed to be getting that template soon. That's what we're supposed to be doing for next year as a overall. So I have to take this information, but I can't tell you what that really looks like. But the data that we use for these, you know, our, our kneecap data, which was the key question why you asked, you know, to see this work, but also other data that we collect, um, from time to time, such as our data walls or other pieces of information. So it's become very complicated. And, um, the theoretically, the, uh, continuous improvement plan is supposed to uncomplicate it. And I'll let you know when I see it. And when that comes about, as it's said in this report, that has to be done with the board, uh, participation, community participation. It's not just the schools. Right now, you know, pretty much the schools do the action plans. You know, we, we put them and we file them on record, but these continuous improvement plans are supposed to be, uh, wider based in their gathering of data.
But it's, it sounds, I mean, these systems of gathering data and using the data to help improve instruction, that's being done anyway. I mean, the, the, the wall, what, what's the?
Data wall.
The data walls, for instance, didn't relate to this. It sounds like these plans, it's just putting different gift wrapping over hopefully what we're already doing to meet our ends.
Right. I mean, each school, yeah, each school, as they, they did these, I mean, they use the data that they gather, both from their kneecap results and from their data walls, to put this, these plans together. Each school, each of the four schools have a improvement team. And in all those schools, including Central, um, they're all part of what we call, you know, multiple tiered system support team. And they meet, we've done an evaluation of all the schools. I mean, I could've given you reams of paperwork, uh, but I didn't think you really needed to see it. But all the schools did a self-assessment this year with a state rep, Jan Willie. And from that are making plans mostly around, uh, besides this, we have new plans that, uh, are coming out in relationship to our math work because that's the place where we really need to improve our scores the most.
About the assessments, we, we are currently doing either formative assessments on a regular basis in our classrooms. We have a series of assessments that we're using that are actually part of the work and action plan. And it is our hope that those are, those, uh, that assessment is going to be used and continue to be used to validate our work on, on our ends. So how we put it into the right package, you kind of the gift wrap thing, I mean.
Yeah, that's my point is that, is that, I mean, we should be doing these things, in my understanding.
And we are.
We're doing these things anyway. And, and my one point was that, all right, we're doing these things, we're just putting different wrapping around them whenever they change what plan we have to do. I guess a, a question, that was more of a statement then, but the question would be, is how, you know, how accurate is that? And how much does this new continuous improvement plan, how much is that gonna throw a wrench into what we're trying to do? Or is it just gonna be putting a, a bow on it instead of different wrapping paper?
I mean, I think the intent, and again, until it's seen, I think the intent is to try to move away from these five, six, seven different documents that we have to do. So that the, every school in the state would be working at, at least to the same parameters. So the hope is that that will be, uh, an improvement. We're switching data, of course, in terms of one of our major pieces of data. And that is right now, kids' data is on reading and math in the kneecaps and there are no more kneecaps. And we don't really know the correlation between the SBACK data and the kneecap data, you know, until there's some years of, you know, running that test. That being said, uh, we keep working on ways to create better dipsticks, screeners. We have a pretty good literacy. We have a pretty good literacy. You know, I would, I would tell you our literacy assessment of kids is probably as good as anybody in the state, but our math is not as strong. Um, we know generally where kids are in math, but we are looking for tools always to make that a stronger and better, uh, piece. Um, you know, the system and the Common Core also changes that. What we used to look for in math isn't what we're not, you know, need to look for now. So, we actually just had a meeting of all K-two teachers and we're having a three-five meeting soon. And that's this kind of work.
You know, that assessment flow is important. And I, I, I think I'm hearing where you're at. We, we definitely, we want instruction that's of high quality. We want an assessment that's gonna help inform the quality of instruction. And then we wanna be able to modify the instruction yet again. And we wanna do that in a proactive way with the utilization of the data. In some ways, our data, and Stuart brings up literacy, we're able to, with a high level of accuracy, be able to say that this is what we want kids to be able to know and do. We have good instruction methodology. We have an assessment that helps to inform that. And oh, by the way, when kneecap has come along, it actually has affirmed that for us. Our hope is, is that, right now, Sback will come out. We believe our instruction is good, our assessment has been good, our formative assessment measures, and Sback is gonna hopefully confirm that. You know, and so that's, I don't, I don't want people to think that, you know, our instruction is gonna drastically change, you know, or those formative assessments unless there's a need. Now, I will say that, you know, as a result of some of the state-level support, um, it's been, I think, a load on us and there's been some, some, what I would say, additional meetings and paperwork. But I do think some of the level of oversight, we have an individual who's come in and worked a lot with Stuart and some of the teams. I think that's been actually good. It's been good to be able, you know, to validate our work. I don't know that every committee member who's been working in every school would say that. But I think it has, has been really positive for us.
So, this isn't, that having to do this, the school improvement plans, whatever the package it is, isn't really significant. You don't have to all of a sudden change everything. It's just feeding it into.
It's, it's how you fit it in there, so, now, I don't, I haven't been doing all the entries. So, if I say too much about that, I'm gonna get kicked 'cause there's a few people in this room that have been doing a lot of the, the work. Stuart being one and Meg being another, so, anyway.
Well, we can tell you stories, but probably Dr. Lou.
Can you tell us how, um, sometimes I think people get the mistaken impression when they read something like this, that Central is different than the other schools? And that's really not the case. These are nuances of.
These are nuances, and also. I put the new plans, I mean, I didn't put, last year's plans, all the schools up till now have done a reading and math plan every year, including Central. Because we have to, it's just part of our Medicaid funding. We have to, you know, uh, pass that in, uh, in August to the state. But nobody's done their new plans because of the template. And also because when we get those, like I said, it's a new process. So, actually, you'll know when that process happens because, uh, you have to be part of the actual development process as the school board. And that's part of the new educational quality standards. So, when I get to that point, or we get to that point, you'll certainly be in the loop.
Okay, you just give a little, I think.
But.
Central will be included in that process?
Central will be included in that. But I, I just wanna be clear that what is required of Central, which is a continuous improvement plan all, and what is required of schools in need of improvement is not the same. You know, so Central does not have to do these kind of plans, you know, a, as you see here with these indicators. We had to look at ten goals, certain number of indicators, uh, have to have, you know, a particular type of committee made up of a particular group of people. Uh, Central is not required to do any of those things. But Sue does have an improvement plan team here, um, that's made up of educators who looks at their work. And that's why I wanted to, because I didn't put the new action plan in, I wanted to have the central worksheet, you know, where all their teachers are looking at data. And that's not very different from what other schools are doing as well.
But Stuart, just to, again, maybe just to snippet more around the qualifying, um, criteria and why, again, why, again, we have well, good performing schools. And I think Julie's point is, you know, this always comes up, you have three and then, and you have our, our two that are and, and the other, this one is not. And so, eh, on the elementary level, I'm saying particularly. And so, again, can you just kind of give a quick update on, on that rationale?
The reason that we're schools in need of improvement is because of subgroups. Um, you know, basically, and, um, for all students at this point, all of our schools made it for all students, um, last year in terms of, uh, AYP, adequately early progress. But in the subgroup poverty, um, in which you need to have at least forty students, um, Orchard and, and Chamberlain and the middle school, and we're, we're schools in need of improvement. Actually, the high school made AYP last year, but there's still a school in need of improvement because they had already been, you know, designated that. Um, this coming year, our belief is, last that we heard, is that all schools, you know, every kid will be a hundred percent proficient. So, as of August, when, uh, what's determined, uh, all schools in the state should be schools in need of improvement except for, um, if you gained a certain number of percentage points, you get what's called safe harbor. So, if you really improved, if you were a school that wasn't already in need of improvement that, um, did the Sback pilot, you stay the same as you were last year. Um, but other than that, or you actually, every kid is proficient. And there are one or two schools, um, where there are usually, because it's all students, have been, uh, proficient. Uh, subgroups are not usually existing in those cases. Um, so there are some kids that, schools that may be, but those are the only three categories that we believe.
So, would you include the category of a subgroup that doesn't have the statistical?
Right, so in other words, if you have.
Thirty-eight or?
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine of any group. If you have thirty-nine, then that, that does not count for that school. Kids count in the whole total of the district.
So, you're saying Central's women.
The poverty threshold, is that?
They, they didn't have forty kids in poverty. Um, i- in three through five, remember? It's not about kindergarteners through second grade. So, the, the big issue, though, is that we believe, though we don't know a hundred percent sure, that, like I said, the law says that all students by two thousand and fourteen would be proficient. We were proficient in all categories and subcategories till the two thousand and twelve threshold, you know, every year. Every two years, it's gone up. So, this is, you know, to everybody being proficient. And we don't know how that will play out. But theoretically, Central would pick up a checkmark this year.
I guess I'm a little. I'm beating this horse, but I, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I understand. Let me go at a little different angle of, I mean, are, the whole process of assessing and improving and all that. I mean, are we, is it trying to meet our ends and monitor that that is driving what we're doing as far as all that? Or is it trying to meet the Medicaid thing and the, uh, school improvement plan and all that stuff? I, I'm just trying to, you know.
So, I, I just wanna be clear. Martin, and you know, and that's why, you know, there's the report on the ends coming up, right? We're moving in the direction of trying to have our overall piece being about our ends, of which one part of the ends, of course, is to be proficient in academic proficiency. And we have other issues as well. But within that.
That could feed reports like this.
Especially when we start talking about proficiency-based graduation. But there are requirements, laws and states and requirements of things. And those aren't related, I mean, the goals aren't related to our ends, the ten goals that we have to talk to. We can relate them to our ends. But the state, you know, it's not the state ends. And it's not the federal ends. It's the South Burlington ends. And so, it's that balance therein, and it's what makes the work more complicated.
I mean, we can't, we can't ignore what we need to do to be able to get the money, but, you know, and, and be able to be eligible for that. But on the other side, we wanna continue to have that healthy cycle of instruction, assessment, re, reaffirmation and instruction, you know, that circle, so. Okay, thank you, Stuart.
Can, we ask questions about the ends now?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna move to the ends, ends monitoring. Um, again, I don't know if you want a quick overview, but you probably had the chance to, to read it already. Yep. So, sure.
Well, just, I, I would like just kind of a quick day, um, like middle school. I mean, for the, um, personal learning plans are a year out, basically. Seventh graders next year, the fall. And I wondered, that's a new way of thinking about things where every student has a personalized plan. And how, can you talk a little bit about how that will be launched and what? And, and how it would work logistically in the school? Will students be assigned to a specific teacher for guidance, like, how do?
Well, I mean, I, I have to be very honest with you, Diane. We have really barely, this was passed in February. You know, there's the daily work that everybody does. And we have certainly not begun to build the structure to how it would work. We believe that the TA, you know, that the thing about the middle school is it, it is in some ways the most, you know, geared in its structure already to do that piece of personal learning plans. Um, just like our high school, because of the tenth grade, um. Thank you, exhibition, sophomore exhibition. We've done some work in, in what is really personal learning plan work. And so, you know, it's, it's looking at those things. So, again, we're not reinventing the wheel, but also, you know, making sure that they relate to our ends as we build it. So, that's a very, uh, you know, key part. And part of that is, you know, within this report, you know, is that question of beginning to move into the middle school, you know, changing the report card to go back to a proficiency-based report card, which it was when I first came here, when I worked for the middle school. And also, but by starting that with some of the kind of behavioral kinds of pieces, you know, that the TA would begin to, um, assess. And that could be the, you know, what we build the learning plans on. But I would be, uh, misspeaking, um, ahead of the game, you know, if I said we had a plan in place to do this that was totally concrete and, you know, um, like that, but.
We're certainly pushing that way to get, you know, to get these set up. And this is, you know, part of our ongoing work as administrators and staff.
I mean, the, the, the fact of the matter is, you know, when we talk about personal learning plans, as you said, you know, next year's, um, you know, they have to be in place for the, the kids who are, I guess, in a sense, presently fifth graders, you know, when they start seventh grade, is that right? Yeah, the kids are gonna be sixth graders next year. When they start seventh grade, their plans need to be in place. And the same, the kids who are sixth graders now, who would be the first, you know, state-required proficiency-based graduation. I mean, we still talk sometimes about being able to do it by nineteen nineteen. But the sixth graders now, when they enter the high school, we would need to know what those proficiencies are because, you know, you're not gonna tell them in their junior year, these are what you need to graduate. When they walk in the door, you need to be able to. So, even though it's not till twenty twenty that you have to have them graduate that way, it's really not till tw- you know, it's a lot sooner. So, that whole package, um, you know, changes a lot of the ways we think or have been thinking.
And the grant that the high school is applying for, is there any cross-work between the middle school and the high school, potentially with the coaching, um, proficiency-based and personal learning plans and?
Yes, I mean, there, there, there are two aspects of that. One is, of course, the grant is a high school grant and it, it really focuses on that. But of course, from that work would, would help our other work. But the other piece is, as we've begun to talk about, you know, initial conversations, especially around proficiency, you know, it's the same as the way the Common Core, when I explained, you know, if this is what a twelfth grader needs to do, then this is what an eleventh grader needs to do, is a tenth grader, ninth grader. And so, basically, we're going to need a proficiency system, which in some ways we already have at the elementary school with standards. But a proficiency system all the way down, back down to K because, you know, the kids are gonna be doing that ladder up. And so, we'll be backwards mapping that from what our end results are. So, we've even talked about, though, again, it's not a concrete plan at this time. We've talked about, you know, personal learning plans before seventh grade. You know, because really, you know, fourth and fifth graders should be setting goals and thinking about what they wanna do, what their aspirations are. They wouldn't be the same as a seventh grade plan. But a seventh grade plan's not gonna be the same as when a tenth grader, you know, really begins to look and is making some decisions about whether they're gonna go to the tech center or, you know, what kind of colleges they wanna go to. But it can't be the first time, you know, you have that discussion of what does it mean to set goals. The other thing about the personal learning plan law is it's parent input. You know, the, one of the pieces that we have to figure out is that time element. You know, it's not just something parents should be signing off on and it's not just something that should be a checklist for kids. If this is going to be meaningful, we really have to build a process of discussion, conference, um, that, you know, I don't wanna use the word unfunded mandate, but we need to find where the time's gonna come from, you know, to really do this right.
Well, and I think we have some examples of, of doing some of that right. We'd like sophomore exhibition where it engages in the, or, you know, and we need to do more of this, but it engages. So, and that's, that's a positive piece.
Again, that's, and, and it is, but, you know, that's a one.
Time.
Time, not annual piece of commitment for everybody to be working together, which the personal learning, learning plans, uh, really are with at least an annual review, though the focus is in seven and nine and eleven in terms of the years.
To your question, Diane, you know, to, to what benefit will this be? The high school initiative for the middle school and others?
I just wondered the coordination.
Absolutely. I think that, I think the, the benefit is that, um, the high school administration and district folks and all of the administrators are certainly gonna be following along. There's likely going to be a template, you know, uh, some structures that are gonna be shared with us that we can likely then perhaps redeploy, you know, into the middle school and make age and developmentally appropriate. So, that's kind of my hope. And, uh, it's a great opportunity for us to take advantage of the resources while we're trying to do the work anyway.
My, my understanding, talking to Liz and Pat, was that Paul Yun was specifically gonna be involved in the training this summer, I think it is, yeah.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay.
All right, we'll move on to, any, any other questions on ends monitoring?
So, we're on to two point one, I think.
Yep, two point one.
So, let's see.
Does it change?
There is a change and the change is at your place, I think, under number six. And I have to thank Martin, uh, for just kind of continuing to coach me a little bit around, uh, language. No, it's helpful. So, that's the one sheet that goes in under number, uh, detail policy number six, evidence. So, that, I just put, I have a page replacement there. Okay? I'm not sure which one it is.
Look, that's two point one zero is the curriculum.
Sorry, my bad.
Just the way it's in your packet. Yeah, I know, you know what, that's kind of two point one and two point one zeros. So, we're on, uh. Two point one.
So, do we need to go through this again, or we?
The question that came back last time, uh, was on number six. I made the changes and then, uh, Martin then, and I had a conversation, um, and felt that I really needed to be a little bit more explicit about, you know, having, having the improved visibility makes our, ensures the safety, um, of our student, staff and community. So, that was added. Other than that, I don't think anything else changed.
I have, I have highlighted the, under evidence for detail seven, that we've deleted no longer than seventy-two hours and put for a reasonably defined period.
Mm-hmm.
That's still accurate?
Yep.
So, are, can we, can we take action on this?
Yeah.
Because it's not, let's just continue. Doesn't have to be, more than just action.
I think it's continued, it says continued from last time is what that means. It is more from action.
It's all, they're all, they're action.
Should we go through the, uh, yes, 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 and all those things?
Yes.
Yes.
I've got the form right here. So, detail policy one.
Yes, yes, and yes, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Detail policy two?
Yes, yes, yes.
Three?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is someone checking the evidence and complaints on this?
Yeah, I'm looking through it again.
Thank you.
No, I'm really looking.
Detail four?
Yes, yes, yes.
Detail five?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm doing it with pen, so don't be wrong, Julie. Detail six?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Detail 7?
Yes, yes, yes.
And detail 8?
Yes, yes, yes.
And the overall policy?
Yes, 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 right? Right, yes.
All right, signing off on this one. Okay, so we'll shift to 3.2. Oh wait, do we have a?
We don't have that.
Okay.
Unless you have it specifically.
Uh, no.
That needs to probably come back.
Yeah, we'll have to bring that one back. Let's put that on the May 20th as well. All right, so 2.10 curriculum and review.
I'm sorry, can we get a copy of the 2.1 with the, with the changes of that language? Just like a clean copy?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Okay, curriculum development and review.
So that one was not done by committee, we just all had some trouble scheduling that available time. So we decided it would be one that we would do as the full group. So here we are.
Any questions or comments from the board?
On page 2, I was just wondering if we could speak a little bit to the Rubicon Atlas? That it was, the original date was 2013 and then it was changed to 2014. I just wondered kind of how the process changed from one year to another, that's all.
So the real problem has been the, that the elementary teachers are basically overwhelmed. Common Core implementation for them is very different than at the middle and the high. And we're trying to figure out a way to really make this without driving everybody around the bend. Because their curriculum is changing. And we have made a 5th grade template of the writing program. And our hope next year is to help teachers, you know, you know, by putting some bones up for them so that then groups and committees, and again, because they're not departmentalized, because there are three schools, and then you need reps from all the grade levels, moving into that software has become more difficult than we thought. So it's still what we want to do because it's how, once we have it up, we'll have a living curriculum that can be easily changed and moved. But we just haven't figured out quite how to make that process. And it's one of the reasons we're not in compliance.
I have a question about, on page 3, if you go down to, and I know we've seen this before Stuart, I just don't get the percentages. And I tried to explain it in here and I still don't get it.
I, no, it's my question. So, so let me just talk about the report in general, if you allow me to. So. No, no, well, first of all, so I would like to rewrite this whole report because I think what, these percentages were this question of, we did a search of all the key components of the ends and where are they in the curriculum? In other words, we use keywords to search through Atlas, for example. And it told us things in which it talked about aspirations. And so we said, what percentage of the four components of, you know, how much disposition of lifelong learning would we find in our curriculum? But that's a really inaccurate way, and Elizabeth has pointed out on several occasions, which is why we didn't put the data back in for 12 and 13. Because this is not a chart that we want to use to do our data. Instead, as I said in the cover sheet, by January of next year, the plan is, we have now in the dropdown menu in Atlas, so that at least 6 through 12, people can go in and they say, oh, I teach that end and I'm going to put it in. And then we'll do a survey of where are the ends, just like the standards, and where are they, which ones are missing.
So what would trigger them to go in there and say, oh?
We are.
Yeah.
No. No, 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 I mean Liz and the high school staff, this is a discussion we're having with the CASs. But we're not asking people to make it up either. It's only if they really are doing that. In other words, we may find that only five ends are taught. We may find that 15, which is what I think will be more likely of the 24. And there are probably ones like having fun along the way, where nobody is explicitly teaching to that. Or whatever we should it be explicitly doing to fun along the way, just for an example. So our hope, our plan is, you know, some will show up in the arts and some will show up in academics. But we will have a better sense then of really what the teachers identified that they're doing now. And then we'll talk about what aren't they doing now. So that's all we're doing to begin with between now and January, you know, in terms of this report.
So are you proposing that this version of the report be rewritten?
Yes, so I put this report out in November, said we weren't in compliance. The board wanted to quote, "see it again." And so that's why we're here. But I would propose that in January of next year, that we rewrite this report to really be a true reflection, because again, we didn't change the ends till January. One of the reasons the report's not accurate is because we changed the ends to better match some of the work that's being done while keeping the intent of the district ends. So my recommendation would be, you know, I mean, we admit no compliance. I would really like to, you know, look at this in a different way. Yeah, well, it's the same interpretation.
Right, but we need to, you know, we need to move forward for sure.
Different kinds of data is needed. And that's partly what that chart's about.
And is that January timeframe, that's January you're talking about? Is that a definitive timeframe to have taken that first pass at populating?
Oh, yes. And some other things as well, the report card, some report card changes.
Gap information.
Yeah. I mean, but we'll be able to report the gaps more accurately. I don't believe we'll be in compliance in January, if that's what you're asking.
No, I wasn't asking that, no.
So is that a big question, should the action plan be rewritten to say that, at least at this level?
In the, to come into compliance, we can do that.
Rather go through stuff that's admittedly not the right stuff. Yep.
We're getting there.
I know, I didn't quite make a promise, but I told Liz and Pat I wouldn't use this, but I know it got included in the packet and I'm going to go back on that now. But just because I know each of the board members has seen it. This is way too busy, then this is part of what Liz and Pat put together for the grant that we discussed earlier in the agenda.
In fairness, there's, I would say, although the graphic organizing is definitely Lisa's work and Pat, but it's definitely an administrative group and kind of talking and Stuart's work along with it, so.
And the reason I'm bringing it up Stuart is, I got excited about the opportunity to really look at kind of state initiatives here, district, ends are really here, looking at school-based initiatives. So what's over here, the high school, that would really become a level. Now, if you're at the high school, you maybe want to start with that and kind of trickle down. But then the state things like Common Core, education quality standards, next gen science standards, I think there's a next gen, is it math or socials?
There will be social studies coming.
Yeah.
They're called something 3, but they are not, unless the state surprises me, which they have done, I do not believe that we'll see them for another year.
Okay. And then what's in here as well is the information that came from the neighborhood learning discussion. So there's a community element that cuts across that probably falls right above or below ends. Actually, probably right above ends. But what I liked about this is I think we're moving in a direction that would allow us to kind of visually summarize a lot of complicated information to the community, to parents and guardians, to students, to staff. And ultimately, what, you know, Patton and Lisa indicated is that you could take, for instance, Common Core and indicate where the connection works to the various ends. So not, that doesn't necessarily have to be depicted on this chart, but to really, like what you're saying, is where are the gaps? So where do we need to fill that in?
And as I said in the report on the ends, at the elementary report card, as we're looking at building the Common Core English part of the ends, you know, language arts part, actually using like the language that are the ends, which is writing for varieties of audiences, and then bullets about what are those standards for a 4th grader? What are the key pieces that makes somebody write for variety audiences in a clear and concise manner? And so that becomes the way that we're trying to build and that'll be kind of the same thing, so that the ends language with clarity around specific academic content becomes what we do for that. And the same for some of the personal development ones, looking what we now mark for PE or health. You know, can we use the ends language with some qualifiers to do that? At the elementary, because we already have a standards based report card, that runs more smoothly. But we are having that, beginning of that discussion at the middle. With proficiency is the other reason that the ends, you know, really begin to come into play. And then it'll be the question of what's the reporting system versus transcription, right? Because at the high school, of course, you have an official transcript and it may not actually list the ends, but somewhere those ends proficiencies have to be listed because the students need to attain those to graduate. Which is different than a credit, because I took the course and I got a D minus or better.
This, I think this was directionally a way to start showing, I could envision, like you said, having the elementary school goals and then the various proficiencies and indicators of that. You know, ultimately, you know, I would, I could see this becoming a dashboard at the student level to really say, where are you in your roadmap to proficiency within any of these areas? And there's obviously state mandates in here and, you know, there may be federal as well, but.
The goal is to, you know, is to wed them so that everybody understands the relationship so that eventually it's not 15 lists or six lists, but one, two lists.
We have some administrative retreat time that will be coming up and that is part of it with clarity on each specific school, but also around the system that supports it underneath it. And that's also part of the organizational structure, you know, and what do we need to make sure we're able to do to support the work, you know? So anyway, this is the infancy and kind of the reluctance right now is to share it broadly is that it's not. You know, I mean, it's good, but we're working on it and we want to, we want to kind of really refine it. And certainly Elizabeth has identified some of the goods and some of the refining ideas as we move forward.
It illustrates the complexity of the task at hand. You know, what you're operating under, what you're trying to align, what you're trying to, it's, puts it out there.
Also is, you know, with some of the initiatives that happen at the various upper levels, the state and federal, you know, when they, if they were to do some of this and to see some of the complexities in which they're putting upon us, that may help perhaps govern, governor, a little govern, governor, a little govern, a little bit of the work in which they push to us, right? Anyway.
There's so much repetition and redundancy, actually. I mean, most, everything that's in everywhere else in here is in our ends. I mean, you know, it's, you know.
It's the beginning.
It's a beautiful validator, actually, in many ways of the ends.
Just starting a one little aside. I mean, I went to a workshop on proficiency based graduation requirements statewide. And quickly, 15 of our ends, really by most people, were identified as some of the proficiencies we would be looking at. So we have 24 ends, you know, some are a little less clear. But, you know, right away, 15 people look at and say, yes, that's what it is that we're looking for. Now we have to flesh them out. You know, part of the thing with the high school is it came out of their knee ask and a lot of committee work and studies for the SB 5 and 6. So we need to have those discussions because people, you know, put time and commitment and they understand the shift. And the same with the learning community, you know, the community outreach work, you know, it says a lot of the same things. I mean, it's what the community wants. It's just a question of showing people how everything is wedded together.
All right, thanks. So as a follow up on this, we'll see this again in?
In January.
Okay, so do we sign off on this as an action of being out of compliance? Or do we just put it on the agenda again?
I think you should probably put it out of compliance. I think. We're out of compliance, so it's on record in case.
Look like we don't have a plan to get it to compliance.
No, I'm gonna.
We're gonna add, we can, why don't we just bring it back next time and we'll have the added.
Give you the plan on compliance next time, the 20th of May. But I will not be here, it's my 35th anniversary and we're actually going away, so.
That's fine Stuart.
All right. All right, we'll move on to.
Good catch, yeah.
See, agenda item 14.
Your minutes, your meeting dates.
Yes.
And those are drafted. Help for you.
So we have April, oh, I'm sorry. This is for the calendar. Okay, gotcha, yeah. Looking at the wrong thing.
Sorry.
Did, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at these, any conflicts that we know about right now?
I know that there are two dates that I won't be there.
And those are Martin?
Deer hunting season.
That's good.
And family vacation. So August 6th and November 19th.
So August 6th is a problem for me, actually. And doesn't mean that you can't have the meeting, but that is a particular, I have a conflict there.
Well, since, since it's a problem for two of you, should we look to reschedule that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if it happens to then conflict for the others, Martin will be in trouble. It's fine, I'll look for.
Any other dates that people know of?
I just wondered, do we, are we meeting?
On July 2nd, do we? Do we take that one off?
We typically have taken the month of July. Although in the past, we've also had some times where we've done some of the contract stuff. But remember, in the contract, it's July 15th currently in the contract, July 15th, anything before or after.
I had one meeting in July.
Yeah, so that may be the 9th, but we could push it up.
It's a holiday weekend to kind of come into.
So you're saying off July?
I just, I wasn't sure, I couldn't remember.
You were looking at the 2nd, you said.
July 2nd, which is close to the 4th.
That's on our, that's on our.
Is it the old, the old calendar?
That's just first Wednesday, yeah.
So this is what, this is the drafted reschedule that drops that.
So we've dropped the 2nd, okay.
So this should.
Okay, so.
Just have one meeting and we don't have it first and 3rd Wednesday. I think that we just throw it on the, it's usually not the first Wednesday because that is.
So it will look for an alternative date to the 6th and just get a revised schedule?
Yep, you got it.
Okay.
I'll see if I can get my deer blind for the 19th.
All right, so let's look at the agenda for the May 20th meeting. I think we needed to.
We're going to make a revision on.
Keep the school property regs on there with an invitation out to Paul Connor.
The music program trends in participation. Gail, who is really an essential part of that report, has been around the bend, the musicals this weekend. She's the director thereof. And if it could be moved to the first meeting in June, I think that would be much better for everybody. Just so it's not a stressor.
Do the first one in June, right?
Yeah, I think she can and she certainly can provide the information. I mean, you know, in order to have this report to you by the 20th, she would need to have some stuff to me by early next week and it's just not going to happen.
Is that the same week though as the giant?
Is that the same week, though, as the giant music gala, final end of the year, big super concert?
Yeah, but she's not the director of that in the same way, she's the director of the musical. Right now she's all musical, which is, the other thing is involved with all the teachers and, you know, I mean, there's always some event, but not to the same extent.
So do you think we could get, when we were talking about social networking and acceptable use, weren't we thinking about having a resource officer present on that?
Fill that in.
Can we do that instead? That would be good.
Yeah, we can try.
Let's see if we can get that up.
To the list, the, the grant presentation from Lisa and Patrick for the future agenda items.
Yes, so we don't lose it, yeah. Did we say to them when we were gonna bring them back, wasn't it the June twentieth? I think it was, wasn't it?
May twentieth?
Or May twenty?
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, so I think it needs to be added, we gotta add it to here, or add it to the twentieth genit. I have given, yeah, I've asked them to come on the twentieth.
And then we needed to re-add the, the big picture enrollment cap.
So I just wanna, sorry, David, I just wanna clarify again. So if you bring us the information on the cap at the twentieth meeting, are we taking action that same night?
At this point, I would say yes, I think we should. I mean, if for some reason there's still uncertainty around continuing, you know, making that determination by numbers within the program, you know, I would let you know, but put it on there.
So that would be one, if we can get it in advance at all, that would be helpful, okay. All right, so we'll look to move social networking off future agenda items?
Mm-hmm, and onto the agenda. The next, New England Secondary School Consortium, next-gen grant is on there, right? Update from Pat and Lisa.
Oh, yes, sorry.
We put on there.
Yep.
Just on the future agenda items, the noise at Chamberlain School. There's been some recent information in the newspaper about F-35 and noise mitigation and...
Conference at the air guard. And it was, it was a briefing, and I was trying to get to it, I couldn't make it. But I'm trying to get the information from the air guard on what was presented. And I am trying to pay attention to the committee, the city of Burlington, the committee, the community, I forget what we call it, consortium group that's coming together as a result, the work between South Burlington and Burlington.
It might just be good to coordinate those at some point.
And did we, did we ever have fundraising on the future agenda item? Or did it fall off?
That's a good point, I don't know, Elizabeth, we can put it on there, we're up for...
Yeah, I think we need to, 'cause we still have an open.
We're on that, we're just been filling in some other items, yeah.
Yes.
I'm wondering if we could, let me just throw as a proposal, that, that we put ends monitoring, I don't know if we put on future agenda items or where to place it, but that we revisit that on a quarterly basis, even if it's ten, fifteen minutes, because it's pretty complicated and, I mean, I'd like to make sure I'm, we're following what's happening with that. So we just put that on future agenda items to prompt us to...
Well, then it might then...
Or maybe that's when we...
For our next calendar, right?
Right, when we do that.
When do we do that?
I don't know, when we did it last. We're gonna have to, we're running out, right? Yeah, so we'll, we'll work that in.
Well, should we, should that be the first meeting of June?
Probably.
I guess we're not doing first meeting...
We did this July, we did this July seventeenth.
Want to take ends monitoring off and we can address it in the calendar?
Yeah, yeah, we could put it in, put it in there for a quarterly basis.
Yep.
I think we often take our future agenda items as things to start with when we populate this annual.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to, oh, I was looking at those future agenda items. Minutes of the April second meeting. Any changes? All right, seeing none, those are approved. Minutes of the April seventh meeting. All right, seeing none, those are approved. And minutes of the April ninth meeting. Seeing none, those are approved. And minutes of the April seventeenth meeting. Seeing none, those are approved. And we'll move on to the consent agenda.
So I'll just say a couple of quick words about this. Obviously you have, you have a hire in here, that's significant, certainly, a leave of absence of Steve Webster. I do wanna just point out that this is a year currently of resignation and retirements, and mostly some of these are pretty significant retirements. And I just wanted to call out Pat Maynard, Bill Maynard, again, long, long history here. John Radamer, I think it's somewhere close to thirty-nine years, I think back to nineteen seventy-five. Mary Lewasco as well, so pretty, you know, pretty significant number of years. I happened to be actually at the same funeral that Dan was at, and one of our, one of our teachers was there. And, you know, just talking about, you know, retiring, it's quite an emotional time for somebody who's spent that length, starting in nineteen seventy-five. So, you know, my hat goes off to a lot of these folks, they've, it's been a pleasure to have them part of our district. So, anyway, I don't know if there's other questions that...
I just wanted to say that some of these people, in particular Mrs. Wosko and Mr. Maynard, were teachers of mine and teachers of my children, teachers of Dan's children, so wow, it's been, it's been a long road and I really appreciate all they've done for our district.
So in, in, being consistent with what we said before, you know, there's the opportunity for the board to have a letter that goes, so we'll prepare that for you and make sure you have that chance. And for some of you who have those direct contacts, obviously, maybe a nice, a nice little add-on to the, to the note.
No, we would pass on our thanks for their service to the district and our congratulations, our best wishes.
Also on there are the bids, so again, I'm not trying to leave anything out here. Yeah, we have bids here for asbestos abatement and snow removal. So again, I necessarily wanna call these all out, but I don't wanna call some and not others.
I have one question about the snow removal. Can I, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Yeah.
So I just wondered, I know you get, you have a ton of RFPs. On what, is there criteria for which, at which you don't go out to bid on, like, there's a, there's an addendum here? And I just wondered, so you're saying add-on another year? I just wondered if there's a threshold at which you make that decision?
The law, the law says you can extend a, somebody's contract every year as long as they don't go above the index, if they've, if it's been bid out competitively and legally. I have only done this three times in seven years, and it, it, this is one area where the snowplow company had a two-year contract, the first contract they had, and they did a really good job. And we thought if they would come in with pricing under the index, it could be a good idea for the school to sign them up for one more year. I would, I would talk, last year we did it with the Coca-Cola company, who was in their first year, and we extended it for a second year. They came to me and said, hey, we'd like to do that again. I said, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna go to the board again, we have to competitively bid it. So the snow plowing will go one year and then we'll bid it out again.
It makes sense, I just wondered what your...
Yeah, that was the thinking, and it, it, it has nothing to do with workload, it's the quality of job they did, yes.
So John, at the other end of this, is there a threshold dollar amount that requires a bid process?
Oh, fifteen thousand dollars. Yes.
So below that you can use administrative judgment on it?
Well, I still have to get quotes, just in our policy, there are quotes we do, yes, but, yeah. Yes, no RFP, right?
He's been with us already, that's part of it, he's been with us, so he's a continuation.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes a new hire, a leave of absence, a number of resignations and retirements, and two bids? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any questions on AP orders that are listed?
I have one, leads to two payments.
Mr. Being made to a concern called GovConnect for what appears to be something like eight or nine Chromebooks.
And Dan, I have those questions and I left them.
I have a copier, I had them printed out for you, your questions, so...
I have the answers here, and I saw that everyone here tonight, so I emailed it to everybody.
Sorry, John.
During the meeting. But the middle school working with the IT department, director of learning, purchased twenty-five Chromebooks as an alternative to more expensive laptops. They're, they're doing that to evaluate and prepare for the fifteen purchase of equipment for the sixth grade. Right now all the sixth grade computers are, there'll be, there won't be any at the end of the year. What they wanted to do was they looked at other districts have used these instead of laptops or desktops, 'cause they're a lot, they are considerably cheaper. And we got them in, in here in early March, and evaluation is done, determine if they'll fit the education needs of all the sixth graders in the years to come. So they're looking at it in the sixth grade classrooms. I think May thirty-first is, is the deadline to make a recommendation to Stuart, and then, 'cause we need the information to see what we're gonna purchase for next year.
And in fact, that work also, I mean, as we look at, also the elementary schools are getting money for technology this year, which they haven't for the last couple of years, and the mobile device in general seems to be the way to go. And so we, we are just looking at the Chromebook versus the cost of laptops in terms of access to kids, but we really need to know if they're gonna do what we need them to do. So that's, that's really what this is, it was a little pilot.
So should I view that as a pilot effort?
Yeah, it's definitely a pilot.
And is this, have we seen the total cost of it here?
Yes.
Yes.
And if they don't measure up, they'll be used as, there's two, two, two ways they'll be used. One, they'll be used as the substitutes when a child, a student comes in with the laptop that needs repaired, they'll be issued one of those. So we, we'll look at our order for laptops this year and see how we can adjust it. Also, there'd be a cart that would be available in the library or to the classrooms, but there was some thought put into that, too, because I, you don't wanna waste money on something that doesn't work.
I mean, it's good technology.
It's really just a question of whether it fits our technology, right?
If you will, something that's, we should be aware of, that's gonna supply more investment in laptops. You know, if it's a pilot program, if it's a ten thousand dollar investment at this point in the game, okay.
Dan had other, other questions, um...
Well, they're, I mean, they're just... My application, I just, there was, I had no idea who S.D. associates that were paying eighteen thousand dollars doing what they do, and they are, they are fundamental questions, I mean. I was more concerned about the Chromebook, because it might portend a change in direction that I think we ought to be aware of.
Okay. All right, Martin, do we have a recap of the board's self-evaluation?
Yes, recap, recap of last meeting. We had two non-board members who reported in. As for the comments, we had two disagrees with the board followed the principles of policy governance focusing on establishing general expectations with appropriate limitations. And I think most of that, part of that, at least one of the comments, was that it was due to the interpretation issues in regards to two-point-one. I can vaguely remember what that was. We had a disagree with the board's focus and deliberations were in support of directional achievement of its ends' policy at a cost we believe the community could afford, though there was no comment specifically explaining that. And then agenda items were prioritized, moved from the parking lot to future meeting dates. There was a disagree on that one. As far as general comments, uh... I'm trying to figure out what... One general comment was with regards to actually the, which is pretty interesting, the, the timing, the board's, board members arrived on time, prepared for discussion, actively participating in meeting. Comment is that the transition from the steering committee meeting is a little tight, and that we should probably be ending, either starting our meeting ten minutes later or ending that meeting five minutes earlier. And one person said we did a great job engaging the community in discussions and inviting their feedback on our performance. And the most important comment is that the oatmeal raisin cookies were good, but not as good as the muffins. You can figure out who made that comment. But I guess I have a question, I wonder, is, since, since we understand there's, there's probably more viewership online, is there some way we can get feedback more easily from... Yeah, yeah, besides about the clogs that Julie wears, that we've had those comments come in, but... But don't we have a, we have a link directly on, to the video on our website, right? Can we have an additional link for feedback to board?
It seems like we're getting more traffic on YouTube.
On YouTube, but I don't know that YouTube will let us have that kind of thing. But you make the link, I mean, you do wanna have enough information where somebody would fill it out, what was the meeting, you know, you know? It's fine, yeah, I give you the opportunity, we have a lot of viewers that are tuning in. To reach out to the people who are actually are tuning in, 'cause few people tune in in person.
Yeah, that's a good idea. All right, unless there are other comments, we have a couple of things, a diploma to sign. I think that's mostly it. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? And we are adjourned, thank you.